All right. Good evening and welcome to the February 20th, 2018 San Bruno Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Chair Chase, Vice Chair Biassodi.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Legacy.
Here.
Commissioner Lethem.
Here.
Commissioner Mason.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance. Commissioner, would you lead us in question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
All right. Item one, approval of minutes for January 16th, 2018.
Through the chair, I move that we approve the minutes of January 16th, 2018.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes are approved. Item two, communications.
There are no additional communications this evening.
Thank you. Item three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to us about something not on the agenda? Okay, item three is closed. Item four, conflicts of interest. Any?
No.
Nope, okay. No conflicts of interest this evening. We'll move on to public hearings. Item five A, 2901 San Bruno Avenue, its request for a use permit to remodel and expand an existing gas station convenience store to encompass the existing service bays pursuant to 12-10810 and 12-80.80, the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Good evening. My name is Amiupadde, planning department staff. The applicant is requesting for a use permit to expand and remodel an existing convenience store doing business as an eco mart at First Move Gas. Michael Nilmeier is the applicant and Sorin Sasekien is the owner. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of San Bruno West and Glenview Drive. The property is located within the CN zoning district, neighborhood commercial, and measures 29,917 square feet in area and is developed with a visual service station constructed in 1972. The service station includes a one-story commercial building that the house is a convenience store and three vehicle service bays in 2,159 square feet. There are currently 22 parking spaces on site and four gasoline service pump island which covered by a canopy. The existing convenience store occupies 845 square feet. The service bay, service base canopy, 1,147 square feet within the building. And there is 167 square foot of storage enclosed area located behind to the existing building. The rear and left side portion of the business abutes the Anarcos storage facility. The neighborhood contains a variety of retail uses in the Sky Crest Shopping Center and also residential neighborhood located in the southeast side of the subject property. The proposed building would include a new entrance entry tower that would add 95 square feet of covered area. The proposed building would retain the same existing gabled roofing style and the material. The proposed entry tower will be topped with the same roofing style and material as the existing. And the other proposed exterior improvements include an updated windows and paint with stone veneer and earth tone colors which will more closely align with the newer residential units across Glen Drive within the Sky Crest development. The existing site contains 4,430 square feet of landscape area, nearly 14.8 percent of the site area, which greatly exceed the required landscape of 7.5 percent on this property. The proposal would not include additional landscape to the property. However, the existing turf area would be removed and replaced with drought tolerant ground cover. The number of onsite parking spaces will be reduced by five spaces to accommodate a new fence storage area behind the building. However, the number of proposed parking spaces, which is 17, will greatly exceed the number of parking spaces required for CN District, for this property, which is nine. The Architecture Review Committee reviewed the project during January 11, 2018 meeting. The Architecture Review Committee indicated support for the proposal and forwarded it project to the Planning Commission with the recommendation to include security lights behind the building, installation of down lighting throughout the site to prevent light pollution, and modern electronic sign to display gas prices. Staff has indicated a condition of approval requiring the applicant to provide external lighting along the front facade that is architecturally compatible with the building and thematically consistent with other treatments. And high efficiency and lighting with timers and sensors at the rear side of the property. The facade update represents an opportune time to update all signage on the property. Therefore, staff has included a condition of approval requiring a master sign program for the site. Overall, staff finds that proposed interior and exterior improvements are well integrated with the existing building and also with the surrounding neighborhood. Staff supports the project as the current auto repair business, which has been in decline for many, for several years, as a result of vehicle with newer, more specialized technology. And to stay competitive, the owner is transitioning his business model to provide a large food mart. Staff sent a legal notice to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject site on February 9th, 2018. No comments have been received as of writing this report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Just as a clarification, the sign program, could you explain that again? Is that, I don't see anything for signage here. Is that, are we requesting?
Yes, so it's a part of condition of approval. We are requesting applicant to submit a master sign program application which will cover replacement of existing signage plus a new signage for a new food mart.
Perfect. Thank you.
If I could add a little further information. If you look at condition number 14, proposed condition number 14, it indicates that the property owner shall prepare an overall master sign program as the planner indicated. The idea is that the master sign program would come back to the planning staff for review in accordance with the sign regulations and be approved at a staff level.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Through the chair.
Sure.
On that sign program requirement, there's no indication of the timing of that. Did the staff want to include a time requirement so that it's being done along with the project?
Again, through the chair, I think that's a good idea, a great idea. And why don't we indicate that the master sign program shall be submitted to staff for approval prior to issuance of a building permit.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Please.
I would like some discussion of the traffic and parking spaces aspects. I understand the findings, one and two, staff feels that it's, that there's not going to be significant detrimental impacts. I'm very familiar with the location. That's probably where I fuel the most often. And I often see quite a bit of traffic and of people stopping to go to the little store. With the four islands, that's eight cars plus the ones waiting, especially at morning and evening commuter traffic, but also on Saturdays. And it gets hard to move around. Removing parking spaces when you're going to attract theoretically more people who are going to need to park seems like it's just going to make the parking and traffic situations worse. Was there any kind of, I may be biased by the times I do access the location. Was there any kind of study or, you know, verification of what the, how busy it is at different hours of the day and week?
If I could, through, through the chair again, if the planner could talk a little bit about the amount of existing parking spaces and the number of spaces that would be removed and the total of remaining spaces as a start.
Existing, currently on site, there are 22 existing parkings and which will be reduced by five spaces and it will be 17. And as per the zoning district, it's only nine parking spaces required. And...
I think that in terms of the analysis that was done by the staff, the staff looked at the requirements in the, in the planning code and then looked at the number of parking spaces on site, the number of being reduced, and determined that overall, the amount of parking on site would far exceed the minimum required. The experience, I think, with staff in terms of this application is that the sense was the number of parking spaces that would remain with the project in place would be adequate. Again, quite a bit higher than the minimum standard per code.
Through the chair. Yes, I, I read this and, but it's less of a comparison with a standard in this case and more with existing conditions. So with more shoppers that are going to, that are expected to spend more time in the store and a situation that I often see quite busy with cars, I would expect that it would be detrimental.
I think there's a trade-off here in terms of service bays versus the extension of retail. So overall, in terms of reducing the number of service bays, expanding retail, still having more parking than the code would require. The sense was there should be adequate parking on site.
Okay. Through the chair.
Sure.
That brings me to my next question. Expanding a food mart across from an existing food mart?
Yes.
Is there, is there not a risk that they would damage an existing business? Seems like it's not the greatest need at that spot.
In terms of the, the overall planning review, the, the planning review is more around, would this be a permitted use at that location? As compared with looking at the competitive market impact on the existing nearby market. In terms of the use itself, the expansion of convenience retail is a permitted use at that location. Typically, the staff is not going to look at the direct market impact. The determination is that if the applicants feel that there's a market for that expansion, it's a permitted use and they meet, at least meet or exceed minimum requirements, we would typically recommend for approval.
Through the chair.
Commissioner.
I also frequent that gas station and, and the markets, both markets. And I served on the planning and the architectural review. And I found it interesting when they were talking about reducing the parking, I also had raised questions for me, as well as to think about what's the impact to that. But in the way that it was being designed and where they were removing the parking, it appeared they were actually rethinking how things were being parked and I, I supported that. As far as the, the marketing or the competition, I think the audience for a gas station, need of a market, is very, very different. And so you're, you're stopping to get gas, but you're going to need something quick. You might be hungry on the way. It's just a quick thing. It's not a grocery shopping mentality. And you might go in there for milk because it's late and the other store is closed. So I think the mentality from the shopping perspective, although it's not our charge to take a look at that, but I do believe that the mindset is, is a different mindset. So I, I didn't have concerns in that piece of it. Looking at the project, at the architectural review and the way it was presented, I really, I really supported the project primarily because of the way of the design, looking at it, more lighting, safer, safer conditions. There were a lot of excellent commitments from the owner to come in and upgrade it. So it'd be much more beneficial to, to, to people coming to the, to their station. So that's my feedback.
Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Please.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. The three service stations will be removed in the proposed plan?
In the proposed plan, I'll defer to the planner to prepare the report. There is the elimination of certain service bays in favor of expanding the convenience retail. And Ami, if you could explain that, please.
Yes, so three existing service bays will be removed and the new convenience, the existing convenience store, that space for existing service base that will be incorporated in existing convenience store. So existing convenience store will be larger than right now.
And the services provided right now are?
It's, right now, it's a three service, auto service base and smaller store, convenience store.
Okay, so then that means that the services that are currently being offered that distinct for that area are going to be removed as well, correct? Do you know what other spaces are available close by that offer the same services that are being taken? So, I mean, do they do tire repair, smog checks? What kind of services exactly?
The question being asked by the commissioner could be answered by the applicants as the applicants come up. In terms of alternative sources for similar services, there are a whole range of similar services along El Camino Real in San Bruno and within our industrial area as well. So those services, those similar services are offered quite broadly here in the city of San Bruno. But I think in terms of your question, Commissioner, perhaps the applicant or applicant's representative could respond to that when they step up.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think, I, I'm aware there's a number of them on El Camino, but in that specific area, I don't believe that there are any that I'm aware of. So it is nice and convenient for, for the neighborhood, to be quite honest. The other question I had was, it does say on page two that there's no existing use permit authorization associated with the gas station. Would this change any, would that, would this change that? Does the approval of this resolution change that?
Through the chair, no, it would not.
Okay. Through the chair. Couple more questions. Will any of the parking spaces provide charging stations for vehicles? Is that an option at this time?
Through the chair, I can respond to that. That's, that's not a requirement of the project. We had this come up recently with the Bay Hill Shopping Center. It's certainly something that we would recommend, we would encourage, but it's not a specific requirement per the code.
Yeah, and I do recall that. I just do want to encourage, as, as these parking spaces are being built and as we, as we move forward in San Bruno, I do want to encourage these developments to have charging stations. So...
Agreed. And again, that's something that as the applicant comes forward, you could make that suggestion.
Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Please.
I saw the advisory committee review that there was a request for video surveillance at the rear side of the building and also in the inside of the building. Can you speak a little bit as to what is currently available as far as video surveillance goes and then whether this is being made a requirement as part of the approval of this plan?
So applicant has applied for a type 21 ABC license as well, so part of condition of approvals from police department that is included, that applicant will provide exterior and interior video surveillance.
All around the building?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. If there's any other questions, let me just double check my notes.
Chair, please.
Through the chair.
She's still, are you good?
Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you, Chair. On condition number six about lighting, in the, on page two, it says the Architectural Review Committee advocated that lighting throughout the site be down lighting, in other words, pointed down to avoid pointing toward the sky and producing what's known as light pollution. Could something be included in condition six about that? That's not there right now.
Through the chair, we can certainly do that. And for the planner, it says provide external lighting along the front facade. We can indicate that the, the type of lighting is not only architecturally compatible, but is downlit or shaded.
All over the property.
Understood.
All right, thank you. I don't know the right language for this. I apologize, but it's very common in, in the environmental discussions to urge that lighting be pointed down because light going into the sky is very damaging to animals and birds. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Please.
I, I pass by the service station many times a day, but at different times of day than you. And I have not experienced any of the backup that, that you were talking about, but some questions that came to mind that I, that you may be able to address are, and this may also be a question for the owner, but whether there are parked cars occupying parking spaces currently that is, that is associated with the mechanical work that's being done in the service bays? And whether, when service bays go away, whether those, those spots will be opened up to shoppers as, as potential for, you know, although we're losing five spaces, perhaps we'll be gaining some in spaces that were occupied by automotive repair cars. So that's one question. I don't know if, if you'd be able to answer, or perhaps the applicant, who was representative?
I think applicant will be...
Can answer that?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll, I'll keep that. And then also, is there any off-street parking available in adjacent, on adjacent streets?
Yes, there are two opposite, off-street parkings available on Glenview Drive and also two on San Bruno West. And off-street parkings will remain same as existing.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I do have a question. So everyone within 300 feet got a notice?
Yes.
So in regards to the competition, if the folks across the street had an issue, they had a fair chance to come down and say something? You think that's safe to assume?
I haven't heard any concerns of writing this staff report.
All right. Are there any other questions for the staff?
Through the chair. Just a suggestion, not a, not related to approval, but as a mom, I'm going to advocate, as one who has stopped at many gas stations, to put a diaper changing station in the bathroom, please. Because you're, you're really turning this gas station to more of an experience, right? You want people to come in and you want people to shop. So it's a small request, but I'm going to advocate for it because I'm up here and I'd like to advocate for moms and dads out there. Thank you.
Very good. Any other question, how much questions for staff? Okay, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing and will the applicant come to the podium and give us an explanation, a description of your project.
Good evening. My name is Michael Nilmeier. I'm the architect for the project. And Mr. Sorin Sasekien is also here. He's the owner of the property. As Ami stated, this building was originally built about 1972. It's metal panels, metal roof. And what we want to do is upgrade the image of the building with some stone veneer wainscoting, removing the service bays and converting that area to retail sales, adding a stucco exterior over the existing metal panels and adding this entry tower in front to define where the entry is. And what, I don't know if you have the color board with you, but basically the color scheme that was presented to the Architectural Review Board kind of takes off the residential development. It's a newer development that's across the street, slightly up the street, same sort of color palette, same sort of stone veneer work that we think will, will tie the building in better with the neighborhood in general. Let me just address a few things that I've heard. One is about the parking. Yes, we're removing the service bays. Some of the existing parking spaces are currently used by vehicles that are waiting to be serviced in the service bays. Basically, simple, pretty much simple car repair. At one point in time, originally, the third bay was a drive-through car wash that had been abandoned years and years ago. And the, the problem with the service bays is that obviously as cars get better and better and better, they get more technologically advanced, and you have to buy and invest a tremendous amount of money in equipment to repair cars. It's pretty much gone are the days when you could pop the hood and, and work on your car yourself. It's, it's, it's really difficult to do. And that kind, that kind of investment that Sorin will address, but it just, it's just not there at this time for him from a, a business perspective. So we would convert those service bays to retail space and upgrading the image of the building. The, with respect also to the parking, yes, there are 22 spaces. Some of those spaces are in the rear of the site and we're keeping some of those for employee parking and storage and the like, which with the vehicles removed that would eventually be moved into the service bay to be repaired or whatever, and employee vehicles parked in back, that frees up a lot of parking. There are, we're going to have, we're moving the air, air water station from the side of the building over to a space where the three existing, there are two existing parking spaces now, where it'll be three. And we're moving the accessible parking space to the south side of the building because it's closer to the entry. And then there are, I think, six or seven existing parking spaces facing Glenview that remain. And there are also a number of vehicles on the south side that face the Arco mini storage, for lack of a better term, that surrounds this property. So I don't think really that parking will be an issue. We moved the entry purposely from where it is now, and right now it's up closer to the other end of the building, but it's very tight given the exact, the, the current location of the gas pumps and the canopy. We wanted to get it farther away because inevitably there would be somebody who will just pull up there and park in front. And we don't want them interfering with, with the gas pumps and tying all that. So that's why the entry is down where it is. Landscaping, we're not adding to the landscape area, but we are improving the landscaping. There are various areas in the existing landscaping that have died back over, over the years that need improving and filling out. And there are two large grass areas, one facing San Bruno Avenue, one at the corner of Glenview and San Bruno Avenue, that we want to remove the turf, which is highly water concentrated and put in drought resistant ground cover. With respect to the lighting, I remember the comments about the down lighting from the Design Review Board meeting, and that, in essence, is the direction we're headed anyway. We're replacing the existing lights at the driveway entries, which are downlights anyway, but they just, they've been hit and need to be repaired and replaced. And the existing lighting on the building shines downward, although there's some outward lighting. But we're, we're going to replace the lighting on the building and add lighting to the back of the site. With respect to security, security is really important. Right now, there are cameras on corners of the building that face toward the back and also around the building. There are also cameras inside the building, but given the fact that the retail sales area would be expanded, there'll be additional cameras both on the exterior and interior of the building. And there also, I didn't notice any comments from the police department, but I know in South San Francisco, the police department has a requirement that there be a camera mounted at eye level right near the main entrance. at eye level right near the main entry, so you get a better picture of... You get a full facial picture of somebody rather than a camera shining from above. We received the conditions of approval earlier today. I mean, they're pretty straightforward, pretty standard conditions with respect to the signage program. Soren is currently talking to some folks about a comprehensive signage program for all the signage, the signage on the building, the price signs that occur on San Bruno Avenue, and there's another sign toward the corner that we probably want to upgrade to electronic, but all those would be tied together with a signage program that would be submitted. Typically, it's a separate permit to the city because it's a separate item rather than the building itself. Some of it goes on the building, some of it goes on the landscaping, but cities typically require a separate permit submitted for that. And the intent is to have that submitted prior to issuance of building permit because it's just part of the package and something that goes on while we're doing our construction documents. I don't think I have any other comments. Oh, just with respect to the Lunardi's across the street and what they sell and what Soren sells, it's a totally different clientele. If I want a deli sandwich, fresh-made, I'd go to Lunardi's. These... This would have pre-made possible sandwiches in a deli case or whatever, something that someone could go in quickly, grab a quick lunch, even if they're not getting gas, and leave. Same thing with sodas or whatever, water, coffee, that sort of thing, chips. It's those sorts of items. It's not full produce section or meat section or deli section, you know? It's not prepared handmade foods. And I think probably Soren would like to make a few comments and address some of your concerns. But before I go, do you have any questions for me?
Questions?
Through the chair?
Please.
Okay. A couple of questions. As I was reviewing the architectural plans, I was not sure what it is, so I thought I would ask, what is denz glass?
Denz glass? Denz glass is a panel, typically a four-foot by eight-foot panel. You've seen it on some buildings, probably the new apartments they're building down at San Mateo Drive in El Camino, where the theater used to be. It's yellow.
Oh.
It's waterproof, water-resistant, and provides a backing for the cement plaster stucco.
Okay.
So it also acts as a bit of an insulation. And then we build an interior wall inside the existing metal panels that would also have insulation and drywall. So...
Great. Thank you.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
Did you have something else?
I have a couple of other things.
No, no.
I wanted to ask about the canopy because I know we've been discussing the main building, and we've been discussing a separate signage... The word is escaping me. Signage plan.
Sign program.
Sign program. There we go. But I wanted to know about the canopy that covers the pumping stations and whether that is to be included in the signage or if that's going to be painted and if any of the materials that were specified here would be applied at the pumping stations or upon the canopy.
That's a good question. Part of the signage program and some of the people that we're speaking to, you know, a lot of companies do signage above the pumps and reface the pumps, that sort of thing. The canopy is relatively new. The underside and lighting were redone about a year ago, I believe. The base was redone about a year ago. So I think Soren can answer that better than I can because he's been talking to some folks about that, so...
Through the chair.
Did you have anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry. She was next. No, no.
She was next.
Thank you. And I apologize, Commissioner, I didn't realize you had more questions. I just had... You know, I actually stopped here on the way... Stopped there on the way down to this meeting, and I sat there for a little while and just kind of watched cars. I noticed that most of the cars stopped, and someone actually got out, bought something at the store while they were pumping gas. So for purposes of parking with four pump stations, two at each, one yard capacity, is it possible to say that there's actually an additional eight spaces at any given time?
Additional eight spaces, other than at the pumps?
No, at the pumps plus the ones in the proposed plan right now, so 17 plus eight.
Well, yeah, there are three spaces directly adjacent to the building. There's one accessible parking space at the south end of the building, right near the entry. Those are close to the building. There are six, if I remember correctly, across from the pump that... But the landscape area that's along Glenview. And then the others are against the south property line near the Arco Storage.
Okay. So it is... Is that right? Yes, okay. I just wanted to say, because I think it's if we include the pump stations, then it's actually more than what's being...
The requirement is nine. Right now, there are 22, and it's a large site.
Right.
For what it is. Then we have almost double, not quite double, the required number of spaces, even while eliminating five of the existing spaces that were pretty much in the back anyway, so...
Great, thank you.
Commissioner. Yes. I was in a bank today, and I saw something interesting, and I thought that it would be worth at least bringing it up. It's certainly not a requirement, but I think you, as a designer or the planner, hear that on each side of the entrance building, as you walked in and out of the bank. Now, granted, this is a bank, high security, but on each side, there were strips with exactly three feet, four feet, so... And cameras. So as people walked out, you have a very clear view approximately of what a person's height would be. So a safety, security piece, which I thought was really valuable. I hadn't noticed it in passing because most of my banking's done online. And so going in there, I saw that, and I thought, hm, you know, it's part of bringing it forward in planning commission meetings and to applicants that it's one more step in security. So I thought I just... You probably are very much aware of it.
Oh, I've seen a lot of them.
Seen a lot of them. But I thought I would just at least, because I think that there are certain establishments that are open for long periods of time that are more at risk, so I just thought I would throw that out as a thought.
Okay, well, point taken. Also, the point taken about the changing station. We'll see how we can fit that in there. It's... Yeah.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for me?
Just a comment through the chair.
Please.
It's the first thing you see when you get off of the Escalante Boulevard, so I just want to say thank you for the improvements. I think it'll be great for people to see this right when they're getting off the freeway before getting onto San Bruno Avenue.
I think it'll be an improvement to the existing building, honestly.
Thank you. Is anyone else from the project?
Good evening. My name is Suren Sasekian, and I'm the owner of the Crestmore Gas and Food. Now, I've been in that location since 1982. Time had come to move on as repair business has become specialty business. It requires a lot of technology and equipment, costly. We cannot do it because of the cost, so we have to move on with something like a food mart to make other profits, extra profits, you know, to stay in business. The concern about this parking, I mean, it's a convenience store, and people are going to spend five minutes parking if they're going to come into the store. It's just probably they're going to use the bathroom or pick a candy or, you know. Meantime, most of the people that shop in the store, they are already parked on the pump island, and they are just... While the gas is pumping, they're going to go inside and pick something and just go on. So throughout my life in that location, that parking has never been full. I mean, I always had plenty of space, so that should not be an issue with parking concerns, so... Anything else? I mean, any question I can answer?
Anyone? Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, through the chair.
Oh, yes, please.
I did want to catch back up with you about the canopy and whether that would be coordinating with the building.
Canopy, we just had the canopy done about six, seven months ago with new lighting and everything. I spent about $60,000 just the canopy. That would stay the same as far as the color and the signage. That is going to stay the same color. So...
Thank you.
Yeah, it's brand new, that canopy.
And then I also... I did want to say thank you because the canopy, it shines, and I remember going in, and it looks very good.
How about at night? Have you seen the lighting?
And beneath it?
Yes.
Yes.
They mentioned that the light is not supposed to hit your eyes. We have lighting just like this, where it does not shine in your eyes, but it will light up the whole area.
I will take the time to notice that. But I do think... But I do think this is a wonderful addition to that neighborhood, and I think that the service that you'll be providing will be beneficial as well.
Thank you.
And thank you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone from the public here want to speak on this? No one? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the Commission for comments, motions, votes.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
I move that we approve. Let me look here. Get back to here. Use permit 17-022 with based on findings and facts, one through eight, and subject to conditions one through 12. And I think there was a condition from Commissioner Peterson on number two, was there, to add the downlighting and the language that goes with that.
Commissioner Johnson, through the chair, if I could point out to you. On condition, recommended condition six, there was the addition of downlighting or shading, and then on condition 14, there was the addition of a timing prior to issuance of a building permit. I think those are the two changes that I have down.
And those are included in your...
Shall I say 23 conditions?
23 conditions to add to that.
Very good. So your motion and those changes? Okay, so we have a motion in place? Seconds, anyone?
A second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved, and there's a 10-day appeal period. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Have a good...
It was a successful opening, Commissioner. Very much.
That was the first time someone go around and thank us all? That was nice. Very nice. Item six, city staff discussion.
The first item is the next Architectural Review Committee meeting and looking for volunteers, three volunteers for the March 15 committee.
I'm available.
Here we go.
We have Commissioner Martin, Commissioner Legacy, and Commissioner Lathene.
Thank you all for volunteering.
Thank you. And moving on, I'd like to talk to you about a couple of things, really one main thing tonight, and it has to do with the upcoming Planning Commissioners Academy. I know that some of the existing planning commissioners have gone to the academy in the past, and we find it very, very beneficial for our commissioners, particularly our new commissioners, to go to the academy. It's put on by the League of California Cities. It's typically about three days in length. This year, it's going to be in Monterey, and it's going to be from April 4th through 6th, 4th, 5th, and 6th. And I contacted several of the commissioners. I think that Commissioner Martin and Commissioner Legacy are able to attend. Lathene, Commissioner Lathene, not this time, but next time.
Next time.
And I was focusing really on the new commissioners at this point. And the Planning Commissioners Academy this time has a number of really great sessions, and just kind of looking through the booklet that we received, and I provided this information to the commissioners I mentioned, such things as the fundamentals of planning, a legislative update, what's new in current law in terms of planning, a course on design review, design guidelines and design review, looking at the role of the planning commissioner and role of staff, staff and planning commissioner, CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, ethics training, city finance, a base class in city finance, and how to conduct a meeting. So those are some of the classes. And what we'll do as we go to the Planning Commissioners Academy, as we've done in the past, we'll certainly get handouts and printed materials and pass that out to all of the commissioners. I think it would be very worthwhile for the new commissioners, and we look forward to going. The city will pick up this cost, just to be clear, and our staff will be providing more information to the commissioners who've indicated that they can attend. So we'll coordinate that and get that going. I also received an email from Commissioner Martin asking me about a number of issues, and I think what I noticed in Commissioner Martin's email is really an interest in knowing more about the downtown. And I know this is something that came up at our last planning commission meeting. I think two or three of you, actually, maybe all of you, said they'd like a little more information about a variety of things, and I'm seeing here from the commissioner's email a real interest in downtown. What I'd like to do is to prepare kind of a more thorough review of downtown. Some of the questions he poses are things like, "Tell us a little bit more about the vision for downtown." Well, the vision for downtown, to a large extent, is in the Transit Quarters Plan, but what I'll do is I'll put together a presentation that'll talk to you more about that. What about maintenance of the downtown? How are we approaching maintenance in the downtown? We can certainly talk about that. There are a number of things that code enforcement has been doing. What about our sign program in terms of the amount of signage that we allow in storefronts? So I'll mention that now. I think I might have mentioned that at our last meeting. But in terms of paper on the storefronts, you can't cover more than 25% of the glazing. I know that some of the storefronts have more than that. Our code enforcement staff and planning staff have worked with a number of the downtown merchants, and a number of the downtown merchants actually have brought down quite a bit of signage to move closer to or even comply with that. We still have a few that are not in compliance. I know that. Onings, something about onings in the downtown, and design standards. Again, if you look at the TCP and kind of look at the CBD, the Central Business District location, and the vision in the Transit Quarters Plan document, it talks about what is the vision for each one of the five character areas, including the CBD. I think that gives you a good idea of kind of the overall vision. We don't require onings for each and every business. We encourage attractive storefronts, and through your role as Architectural Review Committee members and planning commissioners, you have an opportunity with storefront remodels and whatnot to look at, again, the base document, the TCP, the vision there, and to try to work with staff and the applicants, as you did tonight, to come up with an overall design that will use in keeping with the vision of the TCP. Those are some of the questions, and I think they're very, you know, useful, and I think I'll use these as a base to give you a more detailed presentation at an upcoming planning commission meeting back at the senior center where we're televised, and we can, you know, offer that information not only to all of you, but also to the public in a little bit more detail. But thank you very much for your questions and comments, and I'll use these as a base for information for all of you.
And if I may, there are certain locations that actually have no signage at all, and then they just like open and they're stores, and we don't... I mean, the public may not know what they are. So the other side of that is, is there a requirement to have a sign if you have a store?
There should be a sign, and one of the things that we run into sometimes is that businesses will put up what we refer to as temporary signage. So put up, let's say, a fabric sign on a storefront. You'll see that. And our staff has worked with a number of the tenants in the downtown area, business owners and tenants in the downtown area, on San Bruno Avenue, on El Camino Real as well, to move these business owners from the, what I'll refer to as fabric or temporary signs, to permanent professional signage. That's what we're looking for. That's what we would like to see. And so, you're right. If there's no sign, they shouldn't have a sign. If it's a fabric sign and the business has been there a while, that fabric sign should be taken down and there should be a permanent sign. And that's something that our code enforcement and planning staff will need to follow up on. And, you know, another topic that was raised at our prior meeting and also in this email has to do with the papered storefronts. I'll talk more about those. We've had some success, actually, quite a bit of success in working with a number of property owners, business owners, better said, to take down the paper, clean up their storefronts. We still have a few out there. But it's much better than it was about a year ago. So I'll give you a more detailed update at a future meeting at the senior center when we go back there. Thank you.
Very good. And I was just thinking in all of that, David, thank you for all that information. And I was wondering if maybe in that presentation, if you could speak to projects that we've looked at, like the old bank building at San Mateo and San Bruno, came before us and it sort of fell off the map. I don't know where that is. So if you could maybe at that time address some of those projects that maybe are coming or, you know...
I'd be happy to do that. And I can even do that now, if you'd like.
Well, do it, you know, let's do it all at once. That way you can make a really nice presentation and if people watching can get a full scope of what...
I'd be happy to do that, sure.
Thank you, that'd be really nice.
Sounds good.
Was there anything else on city staff discussion?
That's it.
Planning commission discussion. Anyone going? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that on January twenty-third, Director Waltering invited us to the Homes For All, or through Homes For All, the second unit meeting. And it was really well-attended by many people in San Mateo County. Commissioner Lethine joined me as well. And it was really informative as far as what cities really can do to encourage people to have these second units in their homes. They provided us with this nice packet that actually provided estimates, how much it would cost to build a second home. They provided floor plans for building second homes. And then they also announced that, and I don't know if this is something we could put on the San Bruno website, but an actual calculation that has now gone live. So if anyone's interested in a second unit, you can actually go online now, type in what your estimates are and what kind of house you'd want. And then it gives you an estimate of what it would cost to construct that second home. So I thought it was very helpful and thank you for the invitation. And hopefully, we can also talk a little bit more about that here at the planning commission at some point.
You know, that's another good topic, and it was a really informative workshop. They had a guest speaker from Portland, Oregon, who did a PowerPoint presentation and sold books. And he is an expert, I think, at this point, on ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And his book is quite good. We've purchased that book. And we'd be happy to put the information online. And what we can do as well is maybe have a presentation on ADUs, kind of look at his book a little bit and also some of the information that we received. I attended as well at that workshop and provide that to all of you in terms of maybe a presentation, a short presentation, which you two can add to as well.
Thank you for the invitation.
You're welcome.
Very good. Anyone else? Please, chair.
We got a note from those of us who had volunteered to participate as stakeholders on the Bay Hill specific plan research or the planning group. In the next couple of weeks, there's going to be some more meetings and an update on what's going on with that. So I hope to have something to report on after attending that at our next meeting.
Very good.
If I do, I will let you know in advance if you want to have it on the agenda.
So if I could add to that in terms of the Bay Hill specific plan to give a larger update. From a staff perspective, where we are with that particular project is that, as you all know, it's about a hundred acres of land. We're working with Diet and Batia of San Francisco. That's the consultant team that's working with our city. I think all of you have attended meetings on this. And they have prepared at this point four concept alternatives that are based on information received from the public, from all of you at a variety of meetings. We had a stakeholder meeting. We had a property owner meeting. We had a planning commissioner and city council meeting. We had also another workshop. We had four public outreach opportunities. Diet and Batia did three alternatives. And YouTube has also prepared a draft alternative. At this point, we're reviewing those alternatives. We're having our economic and financial consultant EPS evaluate those in terms of the economic and financial impacts of those plans, their full land use diagrams for the full hundred acres of land, their concept. And we're also taking a look at the traffic impacts before we do further fine tuning. We don't want those concept alternatives to be released until we better understand the fiscal, economic, and traffic impacts of them. And no doubt, they'll be in need to adjust those alternatives before we release them. I would say at this point, in terms of releasing the concept alternatives for public input at a community workshop, online survey, and whatnot, we're probably sixty days away from that. Could be longer. But at least sixty days away, again, we need to do that more detailed traffic analysis to understand with that amount of proposed development, what might be the impact or impacts on certain intersections? And also, how about fiscal and economic impacts? Once we know that information, we'll make some adjustments with Diet and Batia, then release those. And the direction we'd like to head is to get public feedback on the alternatives, leading to a preferred alternative. The preferred alternative then would be what we would study in the environmental document, a full EIR we expect for that. And then that would go forward to public hearings later on this year. We're hoping to finish the Bay Hill specific plan, I'm going to say, by the end of the year. And in the meantime, we'll move from the concept alternatives through analysis and public input to a preferred alternative, to a full EIR on the preferred alternative, and then go to public hearings before the full planning commission, city council, full notice of public hearings, and then adoption. And that should be done by the end of the year.
Very good.
Through the chair?
I am very interested in this specific plan. And unfortunately, I was not able, I was out of town. I don't know how these, these things keep lining up, like planned ones in advance. But I was not able to attend the original meeting about the Bay Hill specific plan. But I'm very interested in learning a lot more. And I was not aware that there had been public outreach meetings. And in the future, I would love to know about it so that I could attend and learn more. So I don't know if I could be added to a mailing list. And maybe I, maybe I don't know how these are advertised and should be more aware of that.
Well, let me explain. If you go to the city's website and the Community Development Department website in particular, you'll see that there is a Bay Hill specific plan icon. And you can go there and you can receive information on the past in terms of prior meetings and workshops and the information that we gathered to date. And there you'll also find information about upcoming meetings. So at this point, we're kind of in between. We're in a study phase right now, as I've mentioned. So we don't have any specific meeting scheduled for the upcoming period of time, next sixty days. But once we determine when those meetings will be, we'll put those on the website. But the website, the Bay Hill specific plan icon will get you to the full history of information on that project to date. There's quite a bit of information there that you'll find.
Okay.
And if you have any questions after you review that, please just contact me. Be happy to talk to you further about it.
Great. And one other suggestion related to that would be, and I think this would also be useful for reaching out to the public, to a larger audience, would be perhaps using Nextdoor or maybe, I don't know if Nixle would be appropriate. But I know that there are other ways of reaching out to the community to encourage their participation. It might be useful.
Okay, well, we'll do that. We were doing a number of things already, but we'll look at even broader.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Two items. One is, in the old days, or as they say now, back in the day, planning commission, council, other public meeting agendas and minutes, and even the entire packets were online and OCR'd. Does everyone know what OCR means? OCR means, when you look at a PDF, if it's OCR'd, optical character recognition, you can search using your computer for any word in the entire document. So when you were looking at a five-hundred-page Bay Hill specific plan, you can find every place they say bicycle, for example. Over the years, possibly through the acquisition of different computers and the discarding of software and the realization that software actually costs money, the city has gotten away from this, what I like to think of as public accessibility to information about their government. The modern government, and I can say this about the federal and the state government are pretty good about this, publishes all their documents in PDF and OCR copies. And not only does it make it possible for you to read them and search them, but it makes it possible for you to do web searches and find specific subjects you would like to learn about. And so what I would like to propose is that the commission would encourage the planning department to put all the documents that are available, going back five years, on the web in OCR format, so that we as commissioners can see what's happened in the recent past. And even in the future, when we get a packet, for example, it would be appropriate for that packet to be available on the web, PDF, optical character recognition. I would actually like to ask for some feedback on that. Back many years, not so many years ago, when I was a new planning commissioner, there were people who would come to, we don't have too many people from the general public here tonight, but there were people who would routinely come to planning commission meetings and city council meetings and ask questions and want to look at documents. Amazingly, not so much now. But at the same time, I see a resurgence of that. At public meetings, new people are showing up that I haven't seen before, and they're very inquisitive. And as part of the being inquisitive process, it helps a lot if you can actually do what everybody else does, do web searches and review their documents with their computer if they're looking for specific topics. So it's something that, wait, how many people here think that is reasonable, that public access to their government's documents is a fundamental right? And anyone vote for that? Do you believe that's true? I'd like to know if you don't, because that's significant, too.
Hang on, Lieutenant Johnson have a comment?
Well, I'll, I'll hold my thought to this. I agree with the principle. The specifics, I'm not sure I understood some of the details, so I'm going to reserve...
Sure.
Because I've found a mass of documents that are fully searchable on the planning department and other departments' websites. So I mean, just not know which documents we're talking about, because if they're not there, I don't know about them. But I would, I would agree that an option for commissioners, for example, to subscribe to entirely electronic versions of the documents, to save some paper and some delivery, I would be completely happy with that. But for public access...
I understand. I think that is an option. Isn't that an option?
Through the chair.
Please, Dave.
This year, the city council, working with the city manager, has now been issued, all members have been issued tablets. So they can receive their agendas electronically. So that's something that we can talk about in terms of the next budget cycle, not immediately, but in terms of the next budget cycle, if there's an interest in doing that, we can certainly do that. I think it's really completely unfair to characterize the things you, in the way you've done, Commissioner Peterson. I know that a lot of documents are online, are searchable. And of course, we're all about open, transparent government. So I know that a lot of our documents are online. I think if you go to our website, look up Bay Hill specific plan, go to the Community Development Department website, there are many, many, many documents that are there and they're searchable. So I'd be happy to talk to you about this separately in my office, review these documents with you. We've had this conversation before with the city clerk, with the city manager. I'd be happy to arrange a meeting with you, with the manager, with somebody in the city clerk's office to review this matter. We are very much about trying to improve our transparency, availability of documents. And if we can do better, we will.
I think that's fantastic. And I think that there has been a consistent position of city management that documents are accessible and will be accessible. I would question whether it's as consistently followed out by staff as some of the managers believe.
Through the chair. If I may. So I do support, obviously, the fundamental right to open government transparency. I was, it was confirmed with me by the city's council that all records requests are being responded to within ten days, which is great to hear. And as far as the searchable documents, I do agree with Director Waltering, they are available online. I will say, going back to five years, being someone who's taken on a similar project in my own life outside of here, it is, it could be costly. Although I support it, it could be costly. And I don't know that we have the staff to support it. I know we had to scan documents going back ten years. And it was, it took months and it took three staff members full-time. It was a full-time job just to scan and save and OCR the documents. So I just don't, I just want to say I support that request, but I also know that there's a cost associated to it. And I'm not really sure what San Bruno has the capacity to do right now.
It's been, as I mentioned before, it's been hit and miss. And I think that there is leadership support for it. But I agree with you that budgets could very likely be affecting that.
I'm going to add one more thing. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
The other side is my professional opinion, because I use these types of documents all the time in my job. So I have never done engineering work in San Bruno. So I hadn't checked the site until I got interested in the planning commission. And I was pleasantly surprised at how easy it was to find the type of documents that I look for all the time to analyze planning, to prepare CEQA documentation and so forth. So.
I have one, through the chair, I have one other I have here. Oh, this is another historical look back. Back in the day, when a person would buy a single-family house in San Bruno, they were, part of the reason they would do that is because they liked San Bruno's low-density environment for residential neighborhoods. Actually, in my view, even the apartment areas of the city have a pleasant feel to them. That feeling was actually part of the price that was paid when you bought the house. That feeling was actually part of the price that was paid when you bought the house. Recently, very recently, this year, more or less, with last year having been the groundwork, the state government has forced every city in California to accept accessory dwelling units as the law. With that single legislation, my view, they devalued every residential property in California from the standpoint that you no longer have the expectation of the number of cars outside being about the same next year. Because if a whole bunch of those houses have accessory dwelling units, there could be quite a few more cars out there. I think there's going to be more about this. It's more and more people realize what the implementation of these new laws are going to be. One of the reasons we know it at the planning commission level is because it went through the planning commission on its way to the council as San Bruno adopted its own regulations, which actually are going to be very beneficial to San Bruno as opposed to what some other cities would be going through. But what I would like to do is suggest something that is almost similar to what League of Cities does. This League of Cities, Planning Commission Academy, I can't recommend it more highly. And I very strongly urge the members of our commission that go to that to bring back the handouts, so they can be shared with the rest of the commission. I've been to, I think, three planning commission academies. My enthusiasm for these meetings has never failed. They are outstanding. I think the reason that they do it, the reason that they're, one of the main reasons they're outstanding is because key planning staff and planning commissioners from cities all over California come to these meetings and prepare and make presentations. When you see a presentation at a League of Cities exhibition, as many of us know, you're looking at some of the experts in the field. Some of the experts compared to the entire nation. These are very sharp people. So if you're not able to go, I'd recommend that we, if the staff could help us, that we put a compendium of these documents together, PDF, OCR, searchable.
Of course.
And if you give them to me, I'll do it. I mean, all you need is a scanner. My scanner isn't all that fast.
Commissioner Peterson, we already offered that, and we will take care of that.
Wow. Okay, so that's the end of my topics for this evening. And I thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Through the chair. My comments will probably be a bit redundant, so I'll keep them short. Excuse me. As far as this second dwelling, it is very close to my barge on those. I agree with your sentiments, what you conveyed, Commissioner Peterson. You know, I have a business in San Bruno. Been there 67 years, I've been there 45, and there's one just right next to me. And I think that it's critically important that we look at the impact to those. I'm not opposed to them. I think that they require some guidelines, and that it's not a free-for-all kind of concept, is what it feels like. And, you know, and I'll just be brief on this, but in my circumstances, when they were putting in that, it was 10 parking spaces that they took away for a period of about three months. And in the community where I have a preschool, and, you know, hundreds of parents coming going, it's huge to the neighborhood. So I won't dwell on that, but I think it's really important that we expand that thinking around dwellings. And so, of course, that's dear to my heart and recent. As far as the fundamental rights, I agree with you. The first thought that came to mind, and I keep my thoughts short here, is the cost effect to it. There is so much, there is so much information and so much available that's on the website. And it may not be in the same OCR, I was going to say OCD, but I know it's OCI. Sorry, I'm a little OCD.
Our relationship exists there.
And so there is a lot in there, but I must tell you that it is a good concept, but as a business owner, the thought of putting my time into the past versus the current and the future makes me a little crazy to think about that. And if there's a volunteer group of people who do it, the city, from my perspective, does not have the resource, the time, the ability to do such a good thinking project. But it's not at the expense of not having anything, because things are on there. So I wanted just to convey that piece, because I also have to research items. And I do like the olden days, but the new days have some good things, too. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we missed one important thing this evening. Amy, thank you for a lovely staff report that was very well done. It was a good project, and you brought it forward, and it was nice and clean. It was easy for us to approve. So thank you very much for doing a fine job on that. Very well done. One of the commissioners, I've forgotten who, but Michael was over there going, "Yes," about doing the electronic delivery of the packets. I watched, see?
So you could slip it in at 11:59 on Friday night?
For many years, I was receiving my documents via, you know, electronically, and it worked fine. I'm not looking for a tablet from the city, I've got my own. So I mean, it's not an issue. If it saves your staff time, David, and paper, I'm happy to receive it that way. I don't know about any of the other commissioners, but if it saves them on their Friday evening time from running around the neighborhood dropping off packets, I'm good with electronic.
Or we can figure it out.
And one of the things I think I mentioned, through the chair, I'm sorry, that I mentioned in the beginning, too, is I know these large plans are very expensive. So even if you insist on sending us the paper packets, I think some of us are okay with just getting the eight and a half by elevens. I don't want to speak for everybody, but...
Or 11 by 17, that's a good format.
Yeah, but I know these are very costly.
Yes.
Thank you.
To the applicant.
But yeah, I'm good with, I've used the electronic version for a long, long time. Matter of fact, I ran a meeting off my cellphone, and looking off a Dropbox on my phone. So I mean, it can be done. But yeah, if you guys want to do it that way, I'm completely open to that prospect.
We'll look into that.
Thank you very much, David. And it doesn't need to be searchable, I can read it.
You at least start with picking up our packets.
Just wait, wait, through the chair.